Okay, we're going to call the meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council to order. First off, we had a closed session at 6:00 prior to this meeting and there is nothing to report from that meeting. Marina, would you like to do the roll call?
Councilmember Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Beckman?
Here.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Present.
Mayor Ravazio?
Here. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Todd Cusimano, our town manager, is dealing with a family issue this evening and will not be in the meeting, but Peter and Adam are here, so thank you very much. We'll be ably filling in. Okay, first off, public comment on the closed session item only. Is there any public comment on the closed session item? Hearing none. Is there any comment from the public on items that are not on the agenda for this evening? Okay, hearing none. We have no presentations, and we will then move on to the consent calendar. Purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously, do not require further discussion, they'll be approved by a single motion. Any member of the council staff or public may request removal of an item for discussion.
Pull 4D.
Pull 4D, okay. Anybody else?
Which one is 4D, sorry?
Buena Vista Meadows Suite. Or Casa Buena Meadows Suite.
The contract, okay.
So we're going to pull 4D, okay, and let's deal with 4D first, okay?
Mayor Ravazio, Councilmember Andrews, the reason for the discussion around 4D, as far as I understand it, is just to reconcile a minor difference in the staff report from the resolution. So as we cranked out our funding sources and updated the staff report, we left out a $15,000 total that's going to go towards testing, inspection, construction management. And so what we've done is we provided a handout that's redlined. All the council members should have it. There's copies available at the back for the public, and that basically just kind of reconciles the two. The numbers and the totals in your staff report are correct, and with the amended resolution, that is also correct. So if you're to take an action on the staff report and the resolution, it should be as amended with the redlined version. I'm happy to take any questions about it.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council?
A quick question. How does this compare to the expected budget for this whole project?
We were within a couple of percentage points of the engineer's estimate.
Cool.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public wants to comment or ask about this particular item? Okay.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar items. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, I didn't see the handout.
Can you please go to the microphone and give your name?
I'm sorry, Bob, I didn't see her.
Sorry, I didn't either.
I'd like to pull 4G, please.
Okay, we should have done that five minutes ago.
I waited for you to ask for that.
Okay, that's okay, I guess we will pull 4G. Peter, you're okay with that?
Sure.
Can you tell us what's the deal with 4G, what you're pulling 4G for?
I would like to know what, it says necessary funds. What costs are you talking about in terms of necessary funds for the members to attend these workshops? They should be, I think, included in this kind of a agenda item.
Okay.
Then we would know.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here who can address that?
Well, yeah, 4G, if you turn to that staff report in your packets, there is a staff report that explains that for the full conference registration fee is $375 per person, and the executive forum is $195 per person. The total cost, including airfare, lodging, and taxes and fees, is expected to cost approximately $750 for an individual council member to attend. So that's what the estimated request would be for.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? I guess we'll go back to the entire consent calendar, okay? Then I will entertain a motion. Jason, you're looking at me, so.
You've had two items that have been pulled off the consent calendar. I would recommend that you need to take three motions, one on the full consent calendar minus those two items, and then on the two, individually on each of the two items that have been pulled.
Okay.
All right, I'll move that we approve items 4A through 4I, except for, or removing from that motion, items 4D and 4G.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
All right, I will move that we approve the amended, or slightly modified, as reflected in the handout here at council by staff here, item 4D, which is to approve Resolution 19/2019, awarding a contract for Sanford and Casa Buena Meadows Suite, et cetera, et cetera, clarifying that there is a $15,000 testing and inspection component to that.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
And I'll move that we approve item 4G, which is the approval of necessary funds for interested council members to attend the League of California Cities Mayors and Council Members Executive Forum, with the expected fiscal impact to be approximately $750 plus the registration fee and so forth as described in the report.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Okay, so that wraps up the consent calendar. We'll move on to public hearings. Item 5A, consideration and possible action by the Town Council of Corder Madera to introduce two ordinances, amending health and sanitation prohibiting smoking in Title IX, Peace, Safety, and Morals, Chapter 9, 14, Controlled Substances of Corder Madera Municipal Code, to replace the term cannabis with marijuana, and Ordinance Number 987, amending Title 18, zoning of the Corder Madera Municipal Code to ban all cannabis businesses except cannabis delivery services provided by businesses located outside of the town and to regulate the cultivation of cannabis for personal use. Adam and Phil, I think you guys have a report, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Phil Boyle, senior planner with the town. I do want to make note of a typo, apologize for, the word cannabis and marijuana was transposed in the title of this item. The ordinance itself is correct, but the title was transposed, so we're replacing the word marijuana with cannabis, not vice versa as is stated. So with that, I'd like to give you a PowerPoint presentation discussing the process the town has gone through in developing these two cannabis ordinances. So beginning back of fall of last year, in September, we conducted two public workshops. They were held on a Wednesday and a Saturday, and they're very well attended. We also provided an online public survey that was posted on the town's website and noticed numerous places to all go into in the fall of last year as well. First meeting, official meeting before the planning commission, was in October of last year, and at that point, we summarized, shouldn't be summarized, the workshops and survey results of both those items, the workshop and the survey. And then December, we came to this body for a public hearing. Again, the workshops were summarized, the survey results were brought before you and shown, and you gave us, and we requested direction from you on how to develop an ordinance. Continuing on, in March of this year, after your direction, we went to the planning commission with the draft ordinance. The commission reviewed that ordinance and forwarded a recommendation of approval to this body. And here we are today, on May 7th, before you were our two draft ordinances for possible introduction. And the reason we broke it into two instead of one, after consulting with staff and legal counsel, we thought this is a much cleaner and easier way to handle the various aspects of the ordinances and cannabis regulations. As you probably know, we implemented an urgency moratorium on cannabis-related businesses several years ago, and then we extended it. That moratorium will expire in September of 2019 unless Ordinance Number 987, which is before you, is adopted, and then that moratorium, urgency moratorium, will be superseded by Ordinance 987. So just a brief summary of the online survey. Again, it was posted September through November of last year. It was publicized in our town newsletter, in the reader board, and Nextdoor. We had a total of approximately 409 surveys completed. Eighty-one percent of those people who conducted the survey were residents, and the examples of some of the results of that survey is in your, was given to you back in December and is also in your packet today from the December meeting. Again, the workshops were well attended. We had approximately 30 attendees, and approximately, I'm sorry, approximately 40 attendees, and approximately 30 of them were residents. We had Mike Norton from the police department came and spoke and answered questions. We had presentations by staff, questions and answers, and a very lively discussion. There are many opinions expressed on a variety of issues. We had citizens who were parents, physicians, and all, a whole variety of individuals. It was very worthwhile discussion in both those workshops. The workshops, and the videos, and the handouts, and all materials have been available on our website, our special cannabis ordinance webpage that has been in existence since the beginning of this approximately eight-month process. On the website, again, we have the staff reports and the minutes and all the various materials for review. The direction that town received from the council was to develop an ordinance regulating cannabis, which prohibits cannabis-related businesses within town limits, allows legal deliveries of cannabis products by authorized and licensed businesses outside of Corder Madera, and regulates the location and visibility of personal outdoor cultivation in residential zones. Council and commission directed us not to add any requirements for indoor personal cultivation, which is allowed per state law. And one item that the planning commission wanted to forward to this body is that this ordinance be reviewed three years after its adoption, just if there are any changes requested. A summary of the two ordinances that are in your packet. First one is 986, which is mainly just a cleanup ordinance, and we are changing the term marijuana to cannabis in Title VI and Title IX. And then the second ordinance is Ordinance 987, and that is, that amends and adds to Title 18, which is our zoning ordinance. Within that title, we will be proposing changing three of the chapters, and then adding a new chapter titled regulating personal cultivation of cannabis. Again, just briefly, the first ordinance, 986, is replacing the term marijuana with cannabis to be consistent with the majority of other jurisdictions, as well as the state of California. The more detailed than substantive ordinance, 987, probably first of note is it defines and brings in the term commercial cannabis activity. And instead of saying earlier we just called cannabis-related businesses, this is the state's term. It's far more inclusive and covers a much broader spectrum of commercial cannabis activity. And again, covering everything from cultivation to manufacturing, labeling, transportation, and so on. It also includes both medicinal and adult-use cannabis, and however, it does not include personal use allowed by the state. So that's the definition of commercial cannabis activity, which is in this ordinance. And the ordinance clearly states that it prohibits commercial cannabis activity in the town of Corder Madera, except for licensed delivery services located out of town. I just want to make that abundantly clear. Next, Ordinance 987 goes into restrictions for the cultivation of cannabis for personal use. This ordinance establishes the intent and the purpose for personal cultivation. It restricts personal cultivation to residential zones and structures. It limits adult-use cannabis cultivation for personal use to six mature cannabis plants per residence. And it also states that cultivation sites must be secure, not visible from a public right-of-way, or school, or park, at the ground level with unaided eye. It speaks about restricting of gas products and generators for the cultivation of cannabis, and then requires that cannabis cultivation not create an adverse health or safety impact. And lastly, that requires that if one is a tenant, one needs to have written consent from the property owner to grow cannabis on that location. And now specifically drilling down to outdoor cultivation. Outdoor cultivation in this ordinance is allowed for personal use, and it must be enclosed by, the area that's being cultivated must be enclosed by a solid fence at least six feet in height with a locked gate or gates. Outdoor cultivation for personal use is prohibited on any parcel that is not in the R1 zoning districts, and so that does not include just R2 and R3, which is multifamily zoning. Outdoor cultivation in all cannabis plants and the equipment must be located at least 10 feet from all property lines, and shall not be located in a front setback. And then lastly, this outdoor cultivation for personal use is prohibited on parcels that share one or more property lines with a school. Had a number of people comment about that, or comment their concern about locating near schools, and this is how we chose to address it after feedback from both the council and the commission. The options before the council this evening are to introduce one or more, or one or both of the attached ordinances, 986 and 987 as presented. Your other option is to introduce one or both of the ordinances with modifications or continue this item to a future date. Those are the options before the council this evening. And lastly, I did want to thank a variety of folks that helped work on this project for the many months that it has been with us. There's been lots of public input, and it's been a very dynamic and, I think, beneficial public process. Sean Kennings, a planning consultant who worked with us early on, helped with the workshops and a number of projects. Central Marin Police Authority was very helpful. Our legal staff of Teresa and Judith spent many hours working out the finer details. The various jurisdictions of Marin and Sonoma County were very helpful in contacting them as well. Certainly, last but not least, citizens of Corder Madera and neighboring communities who, neighboring citizens from neighboring communities who came to help out and give their opinion. So that concludes my report, staff. My recommendation is that the council review the materials and consider introducing the two ordinances.
Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
Are there questions from the council for staff? Yes, Eli?
Thank you. So my first question, my understanding is that there are sort of two major components of cannabis. One is THC, which is, has the psychoactive effect and produces the high, and the other is CBD, which does not produce a high or have psychoactive, psychoactive effects, but is used in some medical products that, like things like topical creams and stuff that are used commonly for, I don't know, muscle relaxation, things like that. So I just want to confirm that this does not regulate medical products that do not produce a high or have any sort of psychoactive effects. Is that correct?
Correct. In page, page four of the staff report, about the top third, it's discussed the CBD, and some definition of CBD, and that this ordinance does not specify and regulate CBD products. And if, go on to say, if that's a wish of the council, that's something we can address in the future.
Thank you. And I have one other question, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'm thinking about the potential public nuisance of outdoor growth, specifically the odor, and I'm just wondering what thoughts staff has about enforcement for that, because I don't really know how you would, you have to create like sort of a measurable metric of odor, or offensiveness of an odor, right? So I'm just curious how you guys would approach that.
Yes, that was brought up many times, reached out to many other jurisdictions, and found very little concrete evidence and examples of people having outdoor grows and specific complaints being filed to a police department or to any other entity. And the way we chose to address it is to require grows to be, you know, 10 feet away from all, from all property lines. So again, this is something we can certainly revisit in the future if it does become a nuisance.
Thank you.
Anybody else with questions, or, yes?
Yes, just very briefly, Phil or Adam, can one of you remind me, our other towns in Marin generally where we are with that? I don't need an exhaustive description, but I know, we have these discussions with other mayors and council members regularly, and I know that all of our towns are struggling with it a little bit. Some have taken preliminary positions, others have taken more definite, and others are nowhere with it. Can you remind me kind of where we are with that?
Yeah, I think it varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. I think many of them are wrestling and lining up very similar to what we're doing in terms of allowing outdoor cultivation with some restrictions. There are also several jurisdictions that are not allowing outdoor cultivation at all. The town of Fairfax has a medicinal dispensary, and I think they're in the process of trying to see if that medicinal dispensary can also be retail for adult use. And so I think a number of different jurisdictions are going through the process in a very similar way that we are.
Just to add a little bit to that, I think there, some of the larger cities are also looking at permitting some of the commercial activities, licenses, not storefronts necessarily, but some of the actual business activities associated with the industry, and allowing for the delivery businesses to be located within their jurisdictions, and that goes for the county as well.
Right, it was my understanding, Adam, sorry to maybe just follow up on that, was that the county of Marin and San Rafael and maybe Fairfax had taken steps towards permits, but that some of the southern Marin and central Marin towns had already introduced ordinances that were like kind of anti. Is that right?
That's correct. I mean, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, better summary than we actually did.
Okay. Jim?
Let me see, going to Exhibit A of the...
987.
Okay, on page 20, I think the subdivision cross-reference should be referring to subdivision A.
That's correct. Thanks for pointing that out. There is a...
Here. It's B. That should refer to A, so, anyway.
Gotcha. Okay.
Anything else, or?
That's it.
Follow up, follow up on a related question to Councilmember Beckman's...
David, is your microphone on? No, sorry.
Following up on Councilmember Beckman's question, do I understand you are saying that CBD, as a topical product, and hemp and other components of the plant, will be effectively legal for sale? And so somebody could have a store that represents themselves to have CBD-only components for pain, for seizures, for other things, and sell? If that's the case, are we, do you think we are covered with respect to regulation of age and regulation of actual sort of materials for sale, much the same way as we are with alcohol?
Yeah, I think in terms of, if you mean coverage by the fact that, access to that in terms of it's a product that would be allowed to be accessed per state law or per any of the other laws, we would be covered under those regulations.
And any retailer with those products would have, we would be confident of having regulation that those products wouldn't be sold to underage.
Yeah.
No, again, this ordinance is not covering CBD products, and my understanding is there are CBD products that exist today, lotions and creams, and I do not believe there's any age restrictions in one purchasing those. I don't, yeah, but again, we...
And, okay, I'll say the rest of the discussion later. Okay. Any other questions? I had one about the survey. It said 81% were residents, but that's reported via the internet, correct? So there's no verification as to whether or not people are actually residents or not?
No, we didn't, we didn't have a way to really completely drill down and find that out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions from the council? Okay, then we're going to open it up for public comment. Can I ask how many people want to speak, planning to speak tonight? If you are, just raise your hand. I want to try to make sure everyone, okay, I want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak. We want to hear what you have to say. Everyone is going to get two minutes. If you can start by, I'm sorry, we have a lot of people, and we have, we have, we've had 10 public meetings on this.
You proposed it as a three-minute on your agenda, and I prepared a three-minute piece, and I don't like, I don't think you, this shouldn't be cut off for the, for arbitrary reasons.
Counsel?
You already have cut this down to inside discussion.
It is within the discretion of the council to limit public comment to two minutes, if that's your pleasure.
Okay. What would the council like to do?
Give him three minutes.
I agree with, give him three minutes.
Okay, we'll go with three minutes.
And ask people to try to stick to two and not repeat.
If you have, if you are agreeing with something someone has already said, I would ask you to just, it's fine to just stand up and say that. That's perfectly okay to just say, I agree with what this person said. If you could also start by giving your name and where you're from, that would be helpful too. This is being recorded for video, so, and if you can also line up behind the microphone, that would be helpful too. That'll help us keep things moving. Thank you. Anybody want to speak? Nobody wants to speak? We know at least one gentleman has to speak.
I guess one person who wants to speak. I'll take yours, I'm up for three minutes, and I promise, I won't say anymore. So I prepared a little something. I thank you for having me be able to speak tonight, and thanks to all you council members and everybody involved in the planning commission for trying to tackle this difficult issue. I think it's clearly a lightning rod issue.
Are you comfortable giving your name?
David Bramnick, I live in Corder Madera.
Thank you.
I think this is clearly a lightning rod issue that affects, you know, many people in our community. I think the heart of the issue is how to best serve the will of the people, and base our decisions on real evidence and not just fears that we have. I think it's very clear that this is bad for young teenagers today to consume any kind of strong cannabis or any kind of cannabis products that are out on the market. It's definitely affecting the development of their minds, and it slows down their motivation. I think if we all agree upon that, then let's really look at what maybe the real issues are that we're all concerned about. I think the real issue is that poor city government, the poor city government, not this poor city government, but poor city governments have been tasked to come up with a plan and determine what's best for our residents. I think you're clearly over your heads in terms of how to get this done with the proper expertise, experience, and know-how. It was just shown that you don't know the difference between this CBD and that THC. This is a complicated issue and requires expertise. This shouldn't have happened in the first place. 68% of our residents have voted to legalize marijuana, and now it's up to poor you guys to handle this problem on behalf of all of us. I think the constant cry of normalization has been going on for a long time here. I believe this is really code for not in my backyard. It was wrong to even submit the conclusions of that meaningless survey conducted by the planning commission. There was no statistical reality to that, and I think you all discussed that in December, and you agreed with that. I think basing anything on a flawed survey, lightly attended, 40 people attended a study group, and the opinion of the committee members is not the... group, and the opinion of the committee members is not the right way to make this kind of a big decision. This was a vote of the whole state and the people in this, in this town, and 68% of them voted in favor of this ordinance to legalize. Let's be clear, our local kids already have excellent access to very strong cannabis at both school and through their friends, and in some cases at home. It's hypocrisy for parents who are also consuming marijuana, sedatives, and alcohol to call this a gateway drug, and then worried that even a safe and secure medical dispensary will get their kids really hooked on marijuana. They're already smoking a lot of marijuana, as has been evidenced by the past discussions around here. Education starts at home, and I think all parents need to do their job of communicating what safety is to their kids. In fact, teenage usage dropped in Washington and Colorado after the legalization. That's three minutes?
That's three minutes, yeah, that was a timer. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a couple more points that I think are relevant and would probably make a good discussion.
Is there a concluding sentence?
Time's up, we need to move on to the next person. We need to allow people to speak.
Sir, you can submit your comments if you'd like.
I would be glad to.
That would be helpful, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
I can take them if you'd like, sir.
I guess, there's no one else who wants to speak?
Oh, no, I do.
Oh, okay, if, again, if you, I think a lot of people are planning to speak, if you could line up behind the microphone, that would be helpful, and that way we can keep this rolling for everybody. Thank you very much, and thank you all for your time. Please.
Hi, Jasmine Garrity, former resident of Corder Madara. I'm here today to just talk about some concerns I have, not with the people who are here who are looking to open retail storefronts, I'm sure that a lot of the people here who are looking at retail will be able to meet the compliance and all the things that go along with that. What I'm concerned about is actually what the products are that are going to be going into these stores. Right now, we know that some of the highest potency products are now out on the market, they're up at 98% THC potency levels. I'm concerned about how that's going to impact the health of and well-being of the community here in Corder Madara. So a little story, in 2004, there was the genesis of one of the biggest companies that exists today. There was two Stanford graduates, and they developed an e-cigarette product prototype out of foam. They ultimately formed an e-cigarette company called Plume. Plume's Model 12 product was acquired by Japan Tobacco International in 2015. The two then bought back their stake in Plume and renamed it Pax Labs, which is one of the biggest cannabis industries today. Pax Labs, which also invented the Juul, the largest e-cigarette company, that was spun out of Pax Labs, they co-patented the same shape and design for their product. Pax Labs' popular cannabis vaporizer looks identical to this Juul. Last week, Pax Labs boasted that the company made over $420 million on 420. These are not small companies that we're dealing with in these little retail outlets that are happening here in Corder Madara, these are big companies that are coming into our town. Since its launch in 2016, the Pax Era device has sold over 500,000 devices and has revolutionized how concentrates can be consumed through an effortless vape pod system for cannabis oil extracts. They also have a dab pen version that uses waxes and concentrates in the actual flower, which I was mentioning, can get up to 98% THC. So when we look at these products and all these things that are coming out, like, there's going to be constant new products that are coming out in the upcoming years with legalization. So when we look at these different products, we look at marketing, we look at what's being popular among youth, and this is one of the most popular devices among young people. The alcohol industry is also looking to cash in with a stake in big cannabis. Constellation Brands, which owns Corona and many other beverage companies, have invested heavily in the cannabis market, along with Philip Morris, who owns, who now owns 35% of Juul, they also invested $1.3 billion into a cannabis industry. These are not small companies, so when we think about our community here in Corder Madara, we're opening this up to a huge industry coming in, and it's going to be hard to be able to push those companies out. So let's get it right from the start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sebastian Meyer, I'm 17, and I'm a resident of Mill Valley, former student at Tam High School, and I've been working closely with Jasmine as well as some others to kind of advocate for youth my age on this subject, because as I'm sure you've probably heard from plenty of concerned parents, there's a huge problem in Marin with cannabis and with nicotine devices. And myself included, being a former experimentee slash clean marijuana addict myself, who's now working and going to College of Marin and planning on moving forward in several projects on the side, really just, I feel blessed to be able to speak in situations like these where I can tell you things like, kids are smoking really toxic substances, black market dab pen cartridges are full of disgusting cutters and fillers, and they're all branded towards children really blatantly with flavors like cherry and purple punch and Skywalker OG, just kid things. And, yeah, while, while I don't disagree with medical cannabis, I think medical cannabis is an important part of legalization, I do think that having any type of recreational retail storefront in Marin is a bad idea, given the current climate with, with the youth, because they are already looking for things to latch on to in terms of legitimizing their problems. They talk about how it's legal, how it's a medicine, how it spreads peace and love, and having a, having a storefront in their hometown really would lower their perception of harm, which is already at an all-time low, which in combination with the rising THC percentage is kind of a perfect storm for a really problematic epidemic of addiction, essentially. So I urge you to think about all this as you make your decisions. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Olivia Carpenter, I just graduated from Redwood High School in 2018, and I'm currently a nursing student. I just want to support also that we need to consider, again, putting storefront businesses in Corder Madara, because it would, it would lower the harm perception, like people have said before. The buffer zones would also need, in addition, be between schools, but also parks and other public areas that students would, would be around, and at least 600 feet. The storefront dispensaries would encourage teens to use more than they already do, because it would be more accessible than it already is, and like we already know, it is very accessible as it is. It's, like I said before, it's a decreased perception of harm, and in Corder Madara, we would be the first city to have a storefront dispensary, so we need to just really just consider how this, we need to like think other than like the monetary profits from this, but also the, the public safety and health of the teenagers in this city. And I just think there needs to be like more consideration on this issue before any major decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Carla Condon, Paradise Strive in Corder Madara. I kind of likened this issue, when I was thinking about it, to the difficulty that we've had in the past with enforcing the blight ordinance. When we first adopted it, we thought, this is really going to clean up the town. But having seen personally how difficult it is to enforce and the time span, I see the same thing happening, or potential for happening, in growth of cannabis in someone's yard. I really, really hope that you will consider not accepting that particular issue that would be tied in with the ordinance. I think that it is going to be very difficult to enforce, I think that it can cause retaliation from other neighbors. That how, how can you really tell that the cannabis has been limited to six plants? You can't. And I think that it asks for trouble, there seems to be, from what I've read, growing crime that is linked to the growing of cannabis. So I really think that, that we are asking for trouble. I can understand if people want to grow it inside, you know, then let them, and we only hope that what happens indoors isn't what happened just today in Castro Valley, where there was a cannabis house, and it caught fire and jeopardized a church, school and church right next door. So I highly urge you to abandon the idea of letting there be outdoor growth, not only because it's hard to enforce, but if the specifications aren't met, then there can be the issue of theft or danger to pets or wildlife. Anyway, I credit you with having to deal with this decision, better you than I, but I, I do hope you will consider eliminating the growth outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak?
Hi, my name is Johanna Ketchkesh, and I have two sons who go to Redwood High School. They're in, a junior and a freshman. And so I'm just speaking as the heart of a mom who lives in Larksburg. I've raised our boys here, which they love, this place. Unfortunately, there is a really big issue with marijuana in this area, and my children have both been connected to it in that they've had friends who've really struggled with it. And I think the biggest issue, I agree with the person who just spoke about the growing, that there's no way to regulate it, I think it's just inviting more trouble with marijuana. Our children do have access to it already, and by having it, by hearing from the city, these kids are all very savvy, they're reading the news, they're finding out what the city council's doing, they're very active, actually, which is a great thing, but if they find out that the city has decided to now allow growth here and delivery, it's just a further message to them that cannabis is okay, it's safe. If grownups are making these decisions, then why can't we as kids do this? What's wrong with that? They get information from the schools about how it can harm their brains, and that their brains aren't fully developed yet, but what they really look to is what are the adults doing? And if the adults are doing this, then it must be okay for me. And so I can say, from the heart of a mother, my oldest son, who's a junior at Redwood right now, has two friends who have been pulled out of school for treatment. They both started with marijuana, and some of them, both of them are getting treated for marijuana, but they've also moved on to harder drugs. And when you talk to them personally, they'll all say, it was easy access, I thought it was okay, I saw other people doing it, grownups doing it, California's legalized it, it's okay. But the reality is that kids do look at what's modeled for them, and so if they're seeing a city that thinks this is a great idea, then it's just encouraging them to think the same way. So I'd encourage you not to allow the growth being allowed here in Corder Madara. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak?
Hello, my name is Karen Gervosi, I live at 111 Parkview Circle in Corder Madara. I support approval of ordinances 986 and 987 that are before the council. I believe a yes vote on these ordinances is consistent with the council's responsibility to act prudently in the best interest of our community. There has been much conversation that by not allowing retail dispensaries in Corder Madara, the council is ignoring the wishes of voters who approved Prop 64. Prop 64 was to make adult cannabis use legal in California, it was not to establish retail outlets. So although Prop 64 and subsequent Senate Bill 94 legalized adult use cannabis, Prop 64 and SB 94 also provided the full authority for the town of Corder Madara to control whether there will be any retail cannabis businesses in our town. There are those that seem to be unclear that adults in Corder Madara continue to have access to acquiring both medicinal and recreational cannabis, or may grow it themselves if they wish. Corder Madara is not banning the adult use of cannabis, but it is not Corder Madara's mandate to increase retail access. There's been a lot of anecdotal reporting about the ease with which teenagers can get cannabis on Marin high school campuses. Whether or not this is true, this is not a valid argument for the need for retail dispensaries in our town. Retail dispensaries will not solve the problem of drug sales on high school campuses. Another fallacious argument for retail dispensaries is the ease with which alcohol can be purchased. That alcohol is so readily available does not justify making cannabis more readily available too. Some suggest that there is a significant tax revenue being missed. The amount of tax revenue that could be gained is not a justification for dispensaries. Further, such revenue would be offset by the cost of increased law enforcement, compliance measures, and administration. And lastly, I'm very disappointed with California's lack of successful management of the safety, quality, potency, et cetera, of cannabis products being allowed to be grown, harvested, and sold in California. I think a good place for people to direct their energy and commitment is towards efforts to have cannabis products that meet the same stringent standards we expect of our food and pharmaceuticals through the FDA, and we expect of alcohol and tobacco through the ATF, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Fernandez, I'm a member of the Marin Prevention Network. It's a county coalition that works with the Department of Health and Human Services to reduce underage drinking and drug use in Marin County. I've been pretty close to this issue, as each of the jurisdictions explores the types of cannabis regulations and activities that they're going to, what is the right fit for their individual communities, and seeing the policymakers weigh the pros and the cons of everything before them, especially with the cannabis industry continuing to grow and change in these past two years. I want to just acknowledge the work that you're doing in recognizing how challenging it must be to make these decisions on such a complex topic, that seems to bring up a lot of conflicting information. And one of those pieces of conflicting information I just wanted to address is the impact of legalization on youth use. Somebody made the mistake of sharing a next-door post with me this afternoon, which usually I absolutely avoid next door, but there's, I actually, I've heard at most meetings, there's a claim that legalization has decreased youth use in both Washington and in Colorado. I'd like to share some data from the Journal of the American Medical Association, JAMA, it's a credible peer-reviewed journal. There's a lot of information out there that people are using, that it doesn't come from credible peer-reviewed journals, and so I want to share what they, their findings. So in terms of like national trends, among 45 contiguous states that did not legalize non-medical marijuana use, the prevalence of use among eighth and 10th graders actually decreased. So we're looking at there was a decreasing trend in marijuana use. In Washington State, when we compare the pre and the post-legalization of non-medical marijuana, current marijuana use among the eighth graders increased by 2%, and 10th graders, it increased by 4%. And so these figures were significant, statistically significant. The, in Colorado, they did stay a little bit more baseline, so likely, Colorado's use, actually, it was pretty normalized already, it was a little bit higher than you would have seen nationally, but also the declining trend that you were seeing nationally was likely stalled out by legalization. So the statements that teen use has dropped in both Washington and Colorado after legalization are really not supported by the facts. In Washington, it increased, and in Colorado, it stopped following the decreasing national trend. Oh, time's up. Okay, I have, do you want these?
You want to pass this out? Best out of the phone, you can do that. Thank you.
You might want this Washington Post article.
I'm sorry, you've already had your chance, we need... I'm sorry, sir, please, thank you. Next.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name is...
Excuse me.
Oh, that's fine.
Order, please, we have a public meeting going on, we need to let everybody speak and have their turn. have their turn, okay? Will you please be courteous? Thank you.
Start over.
Go ahead, let's begin again.
Thank you very much. My name is Paul Spurzon. I grew up here in Madera Gardens. I graduated Redwood in 2008. I think this, this whole conversation is very interesting. I think there are very valid concerns about the use and treatment of young people. I have plenty of friends who have become mentally addicted to marijuana and plenty of whom, you know, were not affected by it so much. And I guess, I'm just kind of curious, a lot of the arguments against its use and having a storefront are, you could probably make the same arguments for alcohol, including the potency arguments. There's some very strong distilled liquor sold on most corners here and it's also a public safety hazard. And, you know, I'm wondering where the outrage is against, I don't know, corner liquor stores, if this is such a public concern. And I'm curious about the sort of options for treatment for young people and where funding or opportunities for treatment are. Maybe you guys have more experience on where young people can go. I think it's critical that these sorts of things exist because it is an issue. I don't really have an answer to the store, or a strong opinion on the storefront. If adults have access to it, that's great because that is the law passed and seems to be the opinion of people in this town and the state. But from personal experience during my high school years, it was also rampant use of marijuana. In the 80s, there were other drugs here in this county and other drugs before that and a lot of designer drugs in the 2000s. This county is ripe for that and I think services for young people should be promoted and funded in some way. I guess, was it Mrs. Condon, the representative, who was talking about enforcing and her experience with blight and enforcing those types of regulations? And I was surprised that the answer to the difficulty of enforcing that would be to not allow it at all. I would almost say to allow outdoor growth because it was also voted on in that way and it doesn't seem to be such a public hazard, nor does it seem like high schoolers will be, you know, accessing or starting large outdoor grow ops. At least they wouldn't have when I was in high school. So I would kind of go in favor of allowing the outdoor grow as it is currently stated, just based on the comments here. And I don't have a whole lot more to say other than thanks for speaking up about these issues because it needs to be addressed. I just don't know if, you know, arguing about storefronts is exactly the way to do it.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Pat Ravazio, 427 Oakdale Avenue. I would just like to say I've been part of this process over the eight-month period and I think it has been an absolute model of how a small town has to take one of these big initiatives that California passes and make sense of it. And I think the involvement of all aspects of our community has been great and it's been a gratifying process. It's never going to make everybody happy, but we need to not let perfect get in the way of good. I do think the message is the medium, to quote Marshall McLuhan, I think, I mean, the medium is the message. We have to say to the youth that they should, they should hold off. And how can else can we do that besides not turning it into the next razzle-dazzle, green leaf, whole earth retail store over at the town center or at the mall? I do support passage of both ordinances and my daughter told me today that I need to tell this as a personal story. So I'll say, we raised three daughters here. They were all exposed to marijuana well within their middle school years. We didn't always know about it at the time, but you know, they turned 20 and 22 and they start telling you what really happened. And one of them, and I won't say who, did have a problem with it, still grapples a little bit with her desire to just escape and let it go. But what she told me was that at Redwood, she guessed there were about 30% of the kids that she knew who were smoking in the morning before they got to class, went out again at lunchtime for their midday refresher and then hit on that pipe again as they went home after school, knowing that they could go home, have something to eat and be totally sober and ready for their parents to come home at 6 o'clock at night, only to start the whole process again the following morning. And if that is really true and that's what's going on, we have a really serious problem that we need to start talking to the kids about. And I totally agree with the people who have spoken up about the need for services. And I hate to lay one more thing on you guys' laps, but if there's some way that we could, you know, make kids able to reach out and get help for these things without fear of retribution would be absolutely great. I think there should be more support for parks and recreation. I heard a great TED Talk that the opposite to addiction is connection. And so if we can find fun stuff for these kids to do, maybe we'll give them a reason to not get high. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Linda Hen, a former resident of Corte Madera and I now live in Kent Field. I work to reduce underage alcohol drug use in the Redwood School District. I know you've heard from a number of community members tonight and through letters, professionals, experts, doctors, educators, parents, medical professionals, youth court. And these are not just opinions, these are based on research, facts and truth. This conversation is not about legalization. Cannabis is legal. What we are talking about is what we want to do is decriminalize it. We want it studied, researched and properly regulated by a large regulatory system. When it is legal federally, this could happen. We are not talking about whether medical cannabis should be available. Of course it should. Those that legitimately need it should and do have access through delivery and physical stores. What we are talking about is does Corte Madera need a retail outlet or outdoor grow considering the challenges that are facing our youth? Youth use in states when it has been legalized have both gone up and stayed flat, as you heard before. Though looking at this information is very helpful, we are really primarily interested in what is happening here in Marin County and in our communities. In the Tam Union High School District, cannabis use among 11th graders has gone up four percentage points since legalization. And just comparing it to the state, state use for 11th graders is 17% and the Tam Union District is 40%, 40, for 11th graders and 22% for 9th graders. Our 9th graders are smoking and using and ingesting cannabis at higher rates than the state's 11th graders. And then I chose to compare it to another affluent county in the state, Orange County, thinking we would see similar demographics. But no, 11th grade use is 17%, the state average. So what's going on in Marin County? What is going on here is not normal. We already have a problem. Even if the use went down, it would have to go down significantly to match the California average. And today's, so today's cannabis has, as you heard before, a high THC level. It's easier to consume with vape pens and youth use is already high in our schools. Perception of harm is low and going lower. So why now? Why rush? There's a long list of harms and risks. What we would, we would make ourselves vulnerable to, and the upside is really unknown. Tax revenue is uncertain, the burden to this town is significant and impaired driving is real. Alcohol is already widely available. It is accepted and readily consumed at most adult and youth events and plays a role in our local culture and norms. Marin County ranks in the 99th percentile of adults who drink and our youth statistics are higher. We already have a substance use and abuse problem. Adult modeling around alcohol is not good and that's.
Thank you. Next.
Jack Warner, Town of San Samo. I don't really have much to comment on the specific ordinances themselves. Rather, I just urge council not to treat anecdotal evidence from speaking to youth or surveys of youth regarding their illegal use of drugs as factual. I mean, at the end of the day, I really don't think you're going to be able to get good data about illegal use of substances by surveying high school students. You're just not going to get accurate data and there's no way to really tell whether the data you're getting is accurate. So I would urge council to just consider factual data rather than anecdotal evidence.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Jeremiah Mock. I live just down the street on Pixley and I've had the pleasure of corresponding with some of you about this issue and attending some of the meetings. And I'm just speaking tonight as a private citizen. I'm a public health researcher at University of California at San Francisco. I'm going to speak to you briefly about the issue of outdoor grows because that doesn't necessarily get that much attention. And I think it's a critical issue for us to focus on. So. So people often don't really get a clear visual picture of what we're talking about. That's a picture, the first image is a picture of a large marijuana plant. You're talking about six of these. The next picture is a picture of a really large plant. These can grow to be the size of small citrus trees. They have a value of $3,000 to $7,000 street value. If you go to the next picture, you'll see a close-up of the resins that are on the buds. And if you take a look at the bottom of that picture, you see where I've circled, do you see what the name of that particular variety is? Super skunk. There's a reason for that. That's because of the odor, the skunky odor that is emitted from plants. You're talking about a 10-foot setback. If you take a look at the last picture, that's my home and you can see that there is a parcel right next to my home that has vacant area right now. And I drew in six plants and drew the lines. That's the prevailing winds coming off of Mount Tam and the coast. So in communities all over California and the United States, there are serious issues of disputes between neighbors because between the months of about June and the harvest and around October, when it gets hot and none of us in this town have air conditioning for the most part, we open our windows up for fresh air. The skunk odor travels across fences, across property lines. There is no way to really determine what is going to constitute nuisance in these cases. So you're going to end up with neighbors who are unhappy with one another, legal disputes ultimately that are difficult to resolve, possibly the county getting sued because of the allowance for nuisance and additional amount of time and energy spent by law enforcement having to try to go in and sort this stuff out. You can get adults who are very permissive that will allow their teens to grow and vouch and say that they're their plants. And they're going to harvest something between $20,000 and $30,000 worth of marijuana that they're not going to just consume by themselves. That's a huge amount of pot. So where does it go? It goes out into the marketplace. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Lucinda Smith, I'm also a resident here in Corte Madera. I want to commend the staff's report, number one, and I'd like to also commend the audience for the comments that they brought forth. I hope you listen to them with great sincerity because I think that having these retail outlets sends the message to the kids, it's available. I don't think that Corte Madera is the size of a town that needs to have all of these things available. We're too small. We have an enforcement issue that I think needs to be addressed with great seriousness. You can't tell somebody that part of it is okay and the other part's not okay. And then you, how do you monitor all this in terms of law enforcement? It's putting an undue burden on our police officers and it's not fair to them, number one, and number two, it's not fair to us. So I don't think that that's something that we need to accommodate. I heard comment, and the audience has done a very nice job, about the outdoor growing. The indoor growing is also my concern because if people can close off their windows, cover them up, and they can grow them inside and it's not monitored, it's not regulated, but they can grow these plants and then they can sell them for big dollars, I think it's crazy that we have this allowance. So whatever is in the ordinance, which I'm sure you will probably pass something, but please include that there's not going to be any allowance for indoor growing because it's going to be difficult to monitor, regulate, enforce, and it's fire safety, it's water usage, it's huge. One plant takes an enormous amount of water. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lori Dubin and I'm a 20-year resident of the Twin Cities. I have three children who attended our public schools, Neil Cummins, Hall and Redwood. In 2010, I founded an organization called Be the Influence. It's a parent support program and I started it at Redwood High School and the goal is to educate parents on teen substance use and reduce teen substance use in our community. I am speaking to express my individual hope that you will approve a cannabis ordinance that prohibits retail storefronts, other related businesses, cannabis events and outdoor grows. Basically, Be the Influence was created to address our high rates of substance use which exists among both teens and adults as Linda Hen has discussed. These are all rates that are not anecdotal. It's data that's collected every other year from the California Healthy Kids Survey. So it is reliable data. It's not based on, you know, anecdotes. And we have in Marin, one of the highest rates in the state, the Tamil Pious High School Union District in Marin has the highest rate of all the other school districts. And so that consists of Redwood, Drake and Tam, San Andreas and Tamascall. We have over 2,300 Marin parents that are a part of the Be the Influence program. 800 are at Redwood. And we also are in independent schools such as Branson, Marin Academy and Marin Catholic. And basically, all of these parents are trying to do their best to raise their kids according with their values and help them navigate what is a culture here in Marin of rampant substance use, both on campuses and in our parties, house parties on weekends. A big focus of ours over the past couple of years has been on cannabis and that's because with the medical marijuana movement, the perception of harm has gone down because basically cannabis has been marketed as a harmless herbal drug that cures all ills, including anxiety, insomnia, depression. These are all things that our teens suffer from. And so it's very attractive to them. Obviously, this is happening at a time where TH level, C levels have increased. And we're also focused on vaping, which is not just of nicotine, but cannabis oils and concentrates. We have a real problem with drugged driving. Kids don't feel like driving high is a big deal. So 38%, according to the California Healthy Kids Survey, of our 11th graders in the Tam District admitted to driving under the influence of, or being driven with someone who was under the influence.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak? Please come up to the microphone. It's like we got at least one.
So my name is Andrew Mittelditch and as a resident of Corte Madera and a father of two small children and a psychiatrist, I do not support the presence of cannabis-related businesses in our town. Recreational dispensaries, medical dispensaries, backyard cannabis cultivation and home delivery all pose a risk to our community and our kids. And why is this the case? I feel that the number one reason, in my opinion, is just access. With firearms, access increases the risk of their use and with cannabis, the same is true. Access increases the ease of use and the ease of use increases the risk of abuse. For those with cannabis addiction, quick access is often the difference between relapse and sobriety. And for teenagers, access enables addiction. Cannabis poses an especially significant risk to the teenage brain and current best evidence demonstrates a two to fourfold increase in the risk of psychosis, including schizophrenia. As a psychiatrist, I'm very familiar with the devastation that schizophrenia causes. It's among the most disabling and severe mental illnesses. Frequently, loving parents are simply no longer able to maintain a relationship with a child due to paranoia, delusions, hallucinations. And of course, a large percentage of our chronically homeless in the Bay Area do suffer from psychosis, including schizophrenia. But regardless of age, cannabis impairs cognition and memory for hours to days after use. In teens, there may be irreversible cognitive impacts among heavy users. And do we want to facilitate the possible risk of permanent memory and attention impairment among our children by increasing access? Recent research confirms that treatment outcomes for bipolar disorder, depressive disorders, anxiety disorders are worse among regular cannabis users. In other words, that cannabis makes medicine and psychother- In other words, that cannabis makes medicine and psychotherapy less effective for cannabis use, rather. Cannabis cannot be safely combined with the operation of a motor vehicle. And a last issue is that the legal age to receive a cannabis card is 18, not 21, as it is with recreational cannabis. And given that cannabis prescriptions are rarely written with appropriate patient evaluation and monitoring, that means that any 18-year-old high school student can easily procure a card and then access large amounts of cannabis. I could speak from professional experience that students do exactly that. And these are precisely the ages when cannabis poses the most risk to brain development. And do we want to facilitate this access with a local dispensary? Do we want an 18-year-old high school student to receive home delivery of medical cannabis when his parents are away for the afternoon? So we need not normalize or enable the use of a product that presents these risks to our community, and I'll leave it there. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak? Is anyone else who'd like to speak? If you can line up behind the microphone, that would be helpful. Keep things moving. Thank you.
It's quite heartwarming to see so many great comments made in favor of staying away from it. Yeah, my name is Utkarsh. I live in Pixley. And I actually came in with very less hope, but I'm feeling great that so many people understand the dangers of cannabis. So I'm not going to waste time in repeating those same arguments. I'm just going to touch on two data points quickly. This one is from Census, the United States Census Bureau. With a disability under age 65 years, the percent of population in Corte Madera between 2013 and 2017, 2.9%. Let's assume, looking at the trend, Corte Madera's population was 10,000 people. All the adults under 65 years who have a disability of some kind are 2.9%, which equates to 290 people. So I think some people who are trying to claim that cannabis has great health benefits and whatnot, and people really require these storefronts and whatnot in the community to help them procure cannabis. They're talking about 290 people total out of 10,000 people who have any kind of disability. And most probably, not all those 290 people might require cannabis. It's not a miracle drug. It's just known to do some decent things for people who are, I guess, suffering beyond Other interesting fact, this one is from another interesting website. I actually discovered it while I was sitting there. It's called HealthyMarin.org. And there is a very interesting data point here from 2016. Adults with disability by age, the age group between 18 to 24 is showing like same disability trend in terms of percentage as the age group 65-plus. And I mean, I can share the references later if you want, but this is extremely shady. Like, would you really assume, can you really imagine a young and healthy population between age of 18 and 24 years old is suffering with as many disabilities as people over 65 years of age? You know, I somehow can't equate the medical benefits and requirements of our community to be a driving factor behind approving an ordinance that can essentially help with the installation of cannabis storefronts or whatever in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay. And hearing none, we're going...
But before you close the public comment, I wonder, and I apologize, Mike, I didn't warn you about this, but I wonder, our excellent police chief happens to be in the audience today. I wonder if we could persuade you to offer any comments about this. The second thing is that there's two issues, Mike. Number one, do you have any comments about the proposed ordinance, Chief Norton, sorry, about the ordinance? And then, number two, do you have any comments about the disconnect between federal and state law, or does it not really trouble you?
Yeah, I mean, federal and state law, obviously, the number one thing is it's not legal federally. So by not being legal federally, you can't use banks, which are overseen by the federally. So none of these businesses can use banks. So they must essentially be cash businesses. And any cash business is obviously troubling, but a storefront would be troubling because it is cash-only at this point. And there was a movement to, it seemed like maybe that was going to trend, but as far as I know and what I was reading, is that's gone away at this point. It's even more troubling if you were seriously considering having a delivery business open up in town because obviously, you'd have a, right now, the deliveries, they are legal to come into town, right? Legal by the state. And I think the most you can really do would be requiring them to get a business license or something like that. That'd be tough to enforce anyways because as we know, they're not marked vehicles. You can't really tell an Amazon delivery van from a medical marijuana delivery van now. But they are dealing in cash. But the nice thing is, when they do leave, we don't really see them coming, we don't see them going, but we know there's a lot of cash and marijuana in those cars. If we were to have that business located here, it's kind of like ringing the dinner bell for outside criminals to come and hang around our delivery business, knowing it's kind of picket. You want to wait till the end of the day and steal cash, or do you want to get the marijuana as it leaves for the day? So that's really troubling for me, the cash and the federal thing. One thing I did want to say, and I don't think I've really addressed this with you before, I think I've spoken to your council maybe three or four times on this already, is just DUI, because it's kind of fresh in my mind, because as you probably are aware, we had a fatal DUI accident in San Anselmo about two weeks ago. That was alcohol, and we're waiting to see results if there was something else in the blood system as well. But we all are kind of aware, and everyone knows, well, yeah, if you drink more than one beer or two beers in an hour or two, you might be over the influence. And everyone understands, and no one will argue with me one-on-one that I drive better when I've had a few drinks, or, you know, it's really not a big deal. You guys blow it out of proportion. Everyone really agrees with it. But I have had those exact conversations with people who take OxyContin, you know, because of debilitating pain, or people who use marijuana. And it's, I didn't talk to adult men in the 1950s, but I'm kind of, from talking to my grandparents back in the day, I think that was kind of the way that they thought about alcohol back in the day. You know, you know what? I drive a little better with one drink. I focus more. I this or I that. And it's kind of this denial. And it's not just kids. I mean, I agree with you. It is a problem with kids, and that's what you're really hearing here. It's adults, and it's not just 30-year-olds. It's 60-year-olds. It's 70-year-olds in this county. We have a major problem with driving under the influence of alcohol, and we're starting to see it with other drugs, whether it's prescription or marijuana. And it's something that we're probably going to, you know, talking to the district attorney, it's the number one crime they prosecute in this county is DUI. That's how many we have. And the amount we arrest a year is barely a dent in how many people are driving around. So I just really wanted to hit on that, is the more accessible you make, I mean, frankly, alcohol too, but marijuana, it's not regulated, the content. It's very potent nowadays, and you're going to have a lot of new people using it, at least if it's delivered to their home, just like alcohol. It's not great to get drunk at home by yourself, but you're less likely to probably kill somebody else if you do that. If you're going out to a business and picking things up, whether it's alcohol or marijuana, you can't tell me every single person's going to go home before they eat a gummy bear or smoke a little bit or eat a brownie before they start driving again. So...
Just if I may interrupt for one second. I am closing public comment. I just got a note from council. So public comment is closed because Mike is considered staff.
Oh, didn't realize that.
That's okay, yeah. So unless there is any other person who hasn't spoke who wanted to speak, we're going to close public comment, and we'll come back to Chief Norton, who is staff, for questions from council. Sorry, go ahead. You can finish. I just wanted to clarify that.
That was pretty much it, unless you have any more questions.
Were you explicitly saying that you're encountering more DUIs with cannabis?
Yeah, definitely, since it's become made legal. It's not, and what we're really seeing is a mix of it.
Mix.
Yeah, it's alcohol and cannabis. The problem is, we're not, we are encountering it with cannabis only, I guarantee it. The problem is, we have about, what, 30 or 40 years of CHP kind of leading the way on how to test for alcohol driving. We have really fancy machines. For those of you that have never been arrested for DUI, I hope that's none of you, but you know, there's a series of tests, and you've all seen the movies, but there's a lot of portable devices, preliminary alcohol screening devices and things like that where you can blow into, and they're incredibly accurate with how much alcohol is in your system, and we know the law is .08, and we can tell, hey, you're just under, you're just over, very clear. Marijuana, nothing like that exists right now. So we're basically operating like they probably used to test for DUIs for alcohol in the 50s and 60s. We're having to go through, you know, what we see, what we smell, and then we're basically having to just go through like some cognitive tests, and we have to make a decision based on that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Norton?
Thank you, chief, for doing that extemporaneous like that. I'm sorry, I didn't give you a warning.
Thank you. Okay, so we've moved on from public comment. We're going to come back to the council. Why don't we start with any questions we have for staff? Is there anybody with questions for staff that they would like to ask? I have one actually for our council. I just wanted to clarify, I know the law was passed at the state level, and I know you and I spoke about this today, but do we have any requirement to pass something locally that legalizes or allows marijuana use in town based on what happened at the state level?
So the initiative measure that legalized recreational use, or what is called adult use, did several things. It did legalize adult use of marijuana, but it also expressly provides, in the same initiative measure, that local jurisdictions would retain the ability to decide for themselves whether or not to have any cannabis-related businesses within their borders. And that entire measure was put before the voters. And so when you're talking about what was the voter's intent, you have to look at the whole measure. So the voters who voted yes for the measure did so with the promise that local jurisdictions would be allowed to decide for themselves whether or not to allow these businesses within their borders. Is that the question that you're asking?
Yes.
Yes. There is one other issue that I just will address, that you have adopted a moratorium on cannabis activities. That moratorium ends in September, and so in order to, if it is the desire of council, to ban or limit the type of cannabis businesses that can occur, that can establish themselves within the town, you would need to do that before your moratorium ends. Otherwise, you would have a period where you have no restriction on the state issuing a license for a business to come establish itself within your borders.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes?
Just quickly to add to that, since there was a comment made by one of the members of the public, I just wanted to also note, though, for personal consumption, state law does not permit the town to preclude someone from growing up to six plants indoors in a residence. And so I just want to make that clarification on the record.
That is correct. Alma allows, it does not allow the, a local jurisdiction to entirely preclude indoor grows, that for adult use, that the local jurisdiction has to allow at least six mature plants per residence, not per resident. So in other words, per household.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
If we allow something today, and a future council decides to rope it back, how difficult is it to, will it be for the town to do it in the future, or is it better to say no now and then gradually loosen up?
So the answer to your question really depends on what we're talking about. If we're talking about business, whether or not to allow a business to come and establish itself, essentially a brick-and-mortar business within the borders, if you allow a business to establish itself, and then a future council decides that was a mistake and we want to pull it back, you would end up with a legal non-conforming use in terms of the business that actually established. You wouldn't be able to toss that business out and say, no, never mind. So when it comes to creating zoning for businesses, the rule of thumb is you're better off to go slow and be more conservative and then to decide later to loosen up because you can't really unring the bell once you have a business in town. When it comes to the question of personal use and cultivation, there really isn't that kind of issue. You could decide not to ban, for example, outdoor grows and wait and see whether the nuisance issue with, whatever nuisance issues there may be, with youth, with odor, with the variety of issues that have been raised by the public, and then decide to pull back and say, you know what, the outdoor grow isn't working here in Corte Madera, we're going to change it. You could also go the other way. You could ban outdoor grow and then decide, after you see what's happening in other jurisdictions, that maybe there is a way that you can allow outdoor grows in a way that doesn't create those kinds of nuisances. So the short answer to your question is, when it comes to business establishments that would be creating a brick-and-mortar business here within the town, you do need to worry about not being, essentially allowing it and then trying to pull it back. But when it comes to the issue of personal grows, personal use grows, you could really go either way.
Thank you. Another question?
Is it time for comment or questions?
Let's just do questions first. I know there's a lot of stuff going on here. I had a question for staff. We had a dispensary open here. I was on the council when that happened, and they opened illegally under false pretenses. And my understanding was, if I got this right, that the sales tax revenue from that dispensary at the time was about $18,000 a year. Is that correct?
Yeah, we did, we did look at that, and that is approximately what it was in about 2013, 2014.
And it was the only dispensary open in the county at the time, I believe.
I'm not sure about that, but one of the very few.
Norton said that.
Okay.
So if that were the case, a business like that open, where would that rank in terms of sales tax revenue in the town? I think, because our sales tax revenue is now in excess of $6 million.
It's so far down, you don't need to worry about it.
I asked him.
It's, well, yeah, we did take a look. If you looked at current sales tax revenue to the town, it's down, really down in the 80s and 90s, and I think it's like 87 in terms of businesses and the sales tax revenue by business.
That's okay. Thank you. And Phil, I guess you're the person to talk about this. Enforcing outdoor grows, do we have any experience from other towns or what we've heard? Because I know I have seen articles about this, you know, is one of the issues that seems to come up in other towns. I've gotten sent to me by people who are concerned about it, you know, the odor and the problems, and we've heard a little bit about that in the public comment tonight. Do we have any experience or knowledge that we can apply from other towns about enforcing that?
I haven't heard, I've talked to other jurisdictions, and I haven't heard comments from other entities, police departments or planners, having problems with outdoor grows and smell or odor issues coming up. And a number of people in the public over these last months, I've asked them, people who have talked about other jurisdictions and have asked for contact and haven't received anything from other folks of actual hard evidence of, again, number of calls or particular issues, or how jurisdictions have dealt with odors. So unfortunately, I haven't.
Okay. One of the things, just to add, you know, since the initiative passed and it became effective, and I think it was January 2017, you know, that has been permitted in town to this point, outdoor grows up to six plants inconsistent with state law for personal use. One of the things we've been looking for is to see if, even under the current regulations, even though, you know, whether or not there had been any issues or concerns at least raised with us or to our, you know, police department or whatnot, we have not received complaints to this point. Doesn't mean that can't happen, obviously, going forward, but we, that was one, at least a piece of information we can provide the council in terms of information to date in the town of Corte Madera, in terms of complaints. I would expect we would follow the public nuisance ordinance that the town does have, and I would agree, it's sometimes can be cumbersome and a little bit challenging. Ultimately, that does, is a process that ends up at the council, though, to make that determination whether there is a public nuisance or not with respect to those regulations and requirements.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? If not, then why don't we each, maybe the best way to do this is if we each kind of deliver our initial thoughts. There's a lot going on here, to say the least. So, maybe if we can each just sort of give kind of an initial review of what you're thinking and how you're feeling about this, and we can kind of go from there. David, it looks like you'd like to start.
If it's okay. I first wanted to reflect something that I think Pat Rivasia said very well, that, you know, we undertook this tricky subject nine, 10 months ago, and our town, I think, has done a really good job. I really want to congratulate Phil, and Adam, and staff, and consultants, and folks who've come back. I went to both of those open workshops that you had, and a lot of folks who are here in the room tonight were at one or the other of those workshops, and so, thank you for your dedication. I think it says something really good about the way we do business here. That said, I think that one of, to me, one of the statements that grabbed me about our assignment tonight the most was Mr. Bramnix, the very first speaker, who said, "How do we best serve the will of the people and base our decision on real facts?" Because overnight, over 69%, you were shy. It's 69% of Marin voters voted in favor of legalization. Now, I think Lynda Hen appropriately said that a good portion of that consideration was to decriminalize. I know that my own vote was not because I wanted to do something for myself, but because I wanted to decriminalize the possession of small amounts and the consumption of small amounts in privacy among adults. And so, I don't think that we can automatically assume that the, I interpret, I mean, I've had a lot of people on both sides of this issue come forward to me and say, "Hey, we passed the law. Come on, what are you guys doing?" And a number of emails and concerned citizens saying quite opposite points. So, there's, to me, there's quite a balance of positions that are coming at us on this, but I don't, I want, and so, it's not an easy decision. I want to especially congratulate those, including Jasmine, and Olivia, and Sebastian in particular, and also Jack, who came forward and spoke as knowledgeable, informed substantive folks who are nearer to this issue than I am. I am most close to this issue when my adult children tell me that I'm a hypocrite if I regulate cannabis more strongly than alcohol. And I think at one of, at least one of you said that, and I think that Lori came close to addressing that issue, and I would like to hear more, actually, about that, because we seem to be able to control, or we seem to believe we can control the regulation of alcohol, but we're fearful, open-minded, open-ended fearful about whether or not we control the regulation of this substance. You know, on balance, I think the evidence is that cannabis is bad for youth. That appears to be strong. But one of the best, to me, one of the very best bits of information that came to us in the course of the last months was Dr. Matt Willis, the head of HHS for the county, who said, who sent us the material from the American Medical Association, saying, "Here are the pros and cons. Here are the alleged benefits, and here's where they're real and not real. Here are the alleged detriments, and here's where those are real and not real." I'm very, very sensitive to Dr. Mittelditch's complaint that most of the medical assignments, or medical allowances of marijuana cards are coming from bad practice in the medical profession. Should we be more aggressively regulating the medical profession, Doctor? So, I think there's a lot, a lot that says to me, we should be careful and cautious, and that the cautious, the caution principle maybe should rule. I am, I am not willing to undercut the staff's position so far that says, I think, consistent with California law, internal grows and external grows should be permitted. In fact, there's one thing about our, on page six of the overview, and on page 26 of the, of the actual ordinance, there's reference to the outdoor cultivation, and this is a small quibble, you may think, this is ridiculously small quibble in the face of all of this very big, important, and emotional information. And that is that we're saying there should be a solid fence at least six feet high with a lock gate. On Christmas Tree Hill, we have an overlay district and design standards which really argue against six-foot fences over across the whole hill. Why? Because they're unneighborly. Six-foot fences, six-foot solid fences on roads make them alleys, not roads. It makes it a canyon instead of a neighborhood. And if we go ahead, I mean, I think we should go ahead with permitting outdoor cultivation, but actually, I should, I think we either eliminate that line entirely, or we say they should be enclosed by a fence, period. And anybody who goes through a fence is breaking and entering, right, police chief? So, we're not, we're, there's a violation there. And we should not be overruling those 69% who said they want to decriminalize this substance. I think I've said enough.
Any other thoughts on?
Can I just clarify? David, you're coming down in favor of the ordinances, except modifying the outdoor thing a little bit.
I, you know, I think that a number of people have told me that they are active users of CBD as a pain treatment and other treatment, and if they are able to continue to get those products in our county and with some ease, I think that's appropriate. And it seems that we're not regulating CBD. And so, therefore, I would say I am in favor of the ordinances as prepared, except for that height of fences. Okay? And style of fences.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else want to give their thoughts on where they are on it? Slum, Jim, Eli?
Yeah, I'd love to. Thanks. So, when we first considered this issue in December, I was pretty conflicted, because on one hand, I was sort of skeptical of regulation of retail cannabis storefronts in town, because I was thinking, there's, as we've said, there's literally a liquor store across the street from Town Hall. So, to my mind, that seemed a little hypocritical to be regulating sort of one of these vices, which to my mind is maybe less of a threat to public health, regulating that less than we regulate alcohol, which I think is maybe a more immediate threat to public health and safety. On the other hand, I was concerned about the valid point that's been brought up, that the way federal laws right now, these cannabis businesses would have to be cash-only, and that does sort of put a target on the backs of these stores and the delivery or cash trucks that are coming and going from them. So, I still feel both of those ways. But since we discussed the issue in December, I've had many more discussions with members of the public, medical professionals, medical researchers, and I've learned a lot. And it's sort of changed my perception of sort of the cost-benefit analysis here. I think I've learned a lot about the mental health dangers that cannabis can have, especially on youth. And then, one thing that we recently did that was, I think, really informative for me, was passing our tobacco retailer license ordinance. The way I see it, that was really a parallel issue, because we did exactly what we're considering doing about cannabis right now with tobacco. Why? Because of the epidemic of youth vaping at our high schools. Cannabis is no different. And I really think that, that, going through the process of the tobacco retailer license, for me, kind of illuminated the path that I think seems like the best compromise for our community here. I think that the ordinances as written strike what I see as a fair balance between respecting people's right to have cannabis, because it's legal, and Prop 64 legalized it, but it can still be delivered in town. We're not, we're not interested in regulating that. So, I think we're respecting people's right to obtain and use cannabis personally, while protecting, doing our duty to help protect public health and safety, especially that of our vulnerable kids. I think my two concerns that I had were that, one, this ordinance not regulates CBD, which it doesn't, and the issue of the potential nuisance of outdoor grows, but I'm satisfied with what we've heard from staff, that other towns have not had a significant issue with public nuisance complaints. And I think, I certainly am committed to monitoring this closely, and, you know, if it becomes an issue, we'll certainly address it again. But nothing we do is permanent. We can always come back, and if there are proving to be problems with our ordinance, amend it. So, I think that I'm pretty supportive, based on everything that I've learned of these ordinances. And the last thing I want to say is, I just want to thank everybody who came out to give public comment, both today and via email, and the weeks and months leading up to this. You guys are really helpful, and the more that you get engaged, it makes our meetings go longer, but it really makes our jobs easier. So, sincerely, I thank you for getting involved.
Thank you.
And could you pass the brownies?
Hey, don't bogart those brownies.
It's a funny choice.
I didn't have any dinner. Any other, may I also give their thoughts?
Go ahead, Jim.
Jim?
I guess, I'm in favor of the ordinances as they stand now. One issue I had from day one was the conflict between federal and state law, and how we could sort of maneuver our town down the crease between those two, and I think we succeeded in doing it. Also, I'm old enough to remember when marijuana first became readily available, and...
In the 1930s?
Wow. I'm thinking of that. I'm so, okay, thank you. But the chief harm, in my experience with marijuana, was the felony convictions if you were picked up in certain jurisdictions, because a felony record completely destroys people's career paths. And I know enough people in high school and in college who ran into that, and since they weren't rich, they had to go to the public defender who advised them to plead guilty, and their career path just totally changed. So, that's one of the reasons why I voted for Prop 64 when it came up. And then, I guess, lastly, the suggestion that we revisit the issue in three or four years, I'd make it four or five years, just so that we have...
The next council deals with it.
Yeah.
When's federal law going to change? When's federal law going to change?
My guess is after like 38 states have legalized it, and then the feds will get around to recognizing, and it will either be done at the court level, or, well, you know, we've had a Republican Congress with a Republican president, it wasn't legalized. We had a Democratic president, Democratic Congress, it wasn't legalized. Forget the feds.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. Thank you.
Slum?
Okay, thank you. I'll try to be as brief as I can. I think we've already reached a consensus, so there's probably no need to belabor the point here. I will echo the comments. Thank you, everybody. The excellent comments from our town are appreciated, and we read them all. Before tonight's meeting, we read this lengthy packet, and I've received lots of emails. I will say, unlike, and I sat previously on the planning commission when we were considering marijuana issues 100 years ago, and those meetings were hotly contentious, and they seemed very even, more evenly divided. I received numerous emails from our people before tonight's meeting that were almost uniform in their comments, which were in favor of the ordinances and anti, you know, cannabis in our town. That was a shift. I don't know what it means, but I'd just let you know as a matter of information, that's what I've received. Tonight's meeting, there were some different comments, but it, I don't know what you guys thought, if it was the same with you or not. I'm not allowed to talk to you about this outside the meeting, so, did you, I received almost uniform comments. Did you guys?
Not a single email in favor of...
So, let me just tell you, a few years ago, Eli, very different.
I received several, usually in-person comments, usually from older residents of Corder Madera.
Anti or pro?
Who are pro. Absolutely pro.
Okay. Pro the ordinances or pro like marijuana?
Pro. Pro, "Get off of my back, town council, and don't regulate marijuana the way you guys are trying to regulate marijuana."
Oh, I see. Okay. I had none of those, but I know they're out there. Okay. I am mindful of the legal issues, just so that you're all aware. Part of the obligation, I think, of the town council is that we can't embroil our town in something that we don't need to, or that doesn't protect our, for life safety issues, and that comes in multiple flavors. By the way, thank you again, Chief Norton. I am sorry to put you on the spot, but it's helpful to me, because I don't know what the story is sometimes, and you give me the straight talk. So, the police issue is one. The distinction between the federal and state law worries me slightly. I like the fact that we'll have an opportunity to review it in a few years as a town. I think that makes sense to me, only because the law continues to change. The consequences of acting prematurely, to me, are not known. And there are times, I think, as a town, it's good to be bold. I don't think we ought to boldly go into the unknown and allow something under this circumstance. I think it makes sense to wait a little bit and see how this plays itself out, and I'm not in favor of, I'm very much in favor of the ordinances. I'm not in favor of allowing retail storefronts. And one of the things that mitigates my feeling in this is that delivery's not regulated. People can still, who need it, especially medical marijuana, that we all have more empathy for, can still be received, and there are other ways for they get the product, including neighboring sister jurisdictions whom are walking down the path of permits. I'm not sure that's NIMBYism so much as just the reality that we live in a complicated place, and I don't like to be guided by philosophy. I like to be guided as best I can by sort of a pragmatic operational view, and operationally, some people need to get medical marijuana, and there's a way for them to get at it. And so, we're not causing the kind of draconian problem that we would have if there was no way for them to get what they needed. I don't know how the health effects can reasonably be debated here. I have yet to hear a medical professional who's in favor of cannabis. It just doesn't seem to happen. The terrible effect on young minds is what I'm mostly referring to. I don't, I'm not ignoring the benefits for appetite, and people go through terrible syndromes and disorders whom it can be useful in relieving pain, but the effects on the youth mind doesn't seem reasonably debated. So, what message are we sending to the children? To me, to our next generation, we're sending the message that we've considered the issue carefully, and on balance, now is not the time to do this. So, that's my, those are my views. I'm in favor of the ordinances.
Can I say one more thing, please?
Sure.
Partly in response to the question of timing of when we come back to this, I thought that Jasmine did a really phenomenally good job at raising the question of what are the products that are out there right now, and what do they consist of? And she had some very good information. Kelsey fortunately brought forward information from the Journal of American Medical Association, and two other people, Lynda Hen and Karen Gribosi, both spoke about the need to study, research, and meet more stringent standards than are in operation. I think there are very good standards, probably, in a few state labs, but they're just not in prevalent operational practice in this industry. And I think it will be, that will develop. A part of me thought, well, you know, if we legalize it and have a very carefully controlled store that participates in that research, and is using very careful mixes and so forth, that maybe that would be helpful, but I just, I think it's premature, and we're not going to be particularly expert at conducting that. But I do think that research will advance, and this issue will be revisited. I think it will, I predicted within three years, it will not be a Schedule I narcotic in the federal realm, and yet, it will also be revealed how bad it is for kids. And smoking is bad all the time.
Thank you. So, I give my thoughts. I am in support of this also. First off, I want to thank everybody who spoke this evening, and everybody who sent emails. I've got a ton of emails this week, and really appreciate it. It was really helpful. I think I got four from psychiatrists, licensed psychiatrists who lived in Corder Madera, who gave their opinion on it, and it was just really helpful information, and it's helped inform my decision. Ma'am, I'm sorry, we're having a meeting. I'm sorry, if we can, thank you. Sorry. Couple of things I just want to, I'm going to try to talk and not just reiterate the same thing everyone else is saying up here. First off, access for people is not an issue. You can get marijuana delivered in Corder Madera. I was on the phone this afternoon with a delivery service. Has anyone else here had marijuana delivered? I looked into it, you could do it. I could have had it delivered to the meeting tonight. I thought about it. Fortunately, council recommended against it, because it violates federal law, right? And so, we didn't do it. But if you want marijuana in this town, and you want it delivered to your house, you can get that done. town and you want it delivered to your house, you can get that done. It's not hard to do. Another thing I've heard from people who are in favor of this is sales taxes. We talked about that. This is not a sales tax or a revenue issue for the town. This is a cash business and there just isn't significant tax revenue there. And it would be way down on the list, even if it was as big as it had been in the past. The other thing that really concerns me about this, I'll tell you personally, big tobacco is behind this. Do we trust them after what they have done in the past with cigarettes and what they have done with vaping just in the last couple of years? Altria, aka Philip Morris, invested 1.8 billion for a 48.5% stake in Cronos Group, which is a Canadian marijuana company. They have the right to buy the entire company. I'm going to read a quote from Dr. Stanton Glantz, who is a professor of medicine, a director at the Center for Tobacco Control Research at University of California in San Francisco. This was in a Fox News story. "The tobacco companies are probably better positioned than any other business to get into the cannabis business because they know how to make the product, they know how to design it to maximize the addictive potential, and they know how to sell it. They have a huge marketing network that they can plug into worldwide using this." Do we trust them? Do we want them behind this? Personally, I don't. Which brings me to my next point. I was on the council when the dispensary opened illegally around 2010. And we went through a long legal battle with them. One of the things we learned, they had unlimited money. And the town ended up doing an out-of-court settlement because it was going to cost us a fortune to fight this thing in the courts. Corder Madera, if we were to legalize retail sales, would be a major target for any company that wanted to open a retail business. There is a reason that Nordstrom's, Apple Computer, and Tesla are all located here, right? Because our businesses are in a wealthy county. We're 10 minutes from the Golden Gate Bridge. Most of our town is right off the freeway with thousands of cars daily. And as I said, I know this from last time. There's unlimited funds. We would be under huge pressure to have large retail businesses here. And then finally, and this is far and away to me the most important issue, impact on youth, normalization. This basically makes this normal. You heard the quotes from the CHICS data. That's the California Healthy Kids Survey. We are at crazily high levels for marijuana usage. If we make it available at retail and we make it part of the culture here locally, it's only going to drive those numbers higher. And we've heard from several doctors about how this is a problem with youth. It is more powerful marijuana than we've had in the past, and it's causing problems. So for all those reasons, I fully support where we are going with this. I think we need to monitor closely what's happening with outdoor. I heard you very specifically say you're concerned about that, and I understand that. And I think we need to really pay attention to that. That is something, as council has pointed out, we can come back to quickly. It's not like a business where you have to remove licenses or anything like that. I think we need to monitor that closely and make sure that's not an issue. But I'm in support of this as well. Are there any other further comments or thoughts from the council?
I'll make a motion, Bob.
Okay. I think we need a couple.
Yeah.
If I...
Go ahead.
If I could just interrupt, sorry to clarify. So I do want to point out that the typo that was pointing out was one of the council members on... This is the second ordinance, Ordinance 987, page 6, where it should be subdivision parentheses A, not subdivision parentheses C. And if I could address Commissioner... Sorry, Councilmember Kuhnheart's comments regarding fencing. So fencing in the town, six-foot fences are allowed inside and rear property lines. And on in front setbacks, four-foot fences are the maximum allowed. So the intention of writing that code that way is that, number one, you can't have an outdoor grow in your front setback. So you couldn't have a four-foot fence and an outdoor grow. You can't have a six-foot fence in the front yard setback. So your really, your only alternative is to have your outdoor grow in the side or rear.
It should be A.
And it needs to be 10 feet away from the property line.
You can keep it.
And your side or rear property line has to have, can have a maximum of six-foot tall fence. Hope that clarifies.
We need locks.
I just think this is... I really think this is Big Brother. And we don't need Big Brother.
Well, I think the idea behind it was to reduce the visibility of the plants, right? To deter potential theft.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion that we introduce Ordinance Number 986, which amends Title 6 for health.
Your mic needs to come down.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm moving that we should introduce Ordinance Number 986, which amends Title 6 of the Health and Sanitation, Chapter 6.14, prohibiting smoking in public places, places of employment, other areas, and multi-unit housing, and amends Title 9, which is P. Safety and Morals, Chapter 9.14, Controlled Substances.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? No? Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnheart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes.
I'll move that we introduce Ordinance Number 987, which amends Title 18 for zoning, Chapters 18.02 General, prohibiting cannabis businesses, and 18.04 Definitions. However, I'd point out that, as one of my fellow council members pointed out here, Chapter 18.02.120, Sub B, appears to have an incorrect internal reference to subdivision C, which ought to be a reference to subdivision A internally. So with that, with the clarification that this ordinance, there ought to be some typographical review of it. But in other, but in some and substance, it should be permitted, as well as adding, or introduced, as well as adding to Title 18, zoning, Chapter 18.23, regulating the personal cultivation of cannabis. I will move that those two titles be amended and added per Ordinance Number 987.
Okay.
Second.
There is a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, then.
Okay. Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnheart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Rivasio?
Yes. And I think that...
Is that it, Adam?
Correct. 986 and 987. We'll move on to business items. There are none.
These are the first reads, right. So they will be hearing these again.
Yes. Town manager report. Todd is not here. Adam, did you have anything?
I think Lorena has something that she'd like to communicate.
Dog parks.
So Town Manager Kusamano told me to inform you that the Parks and Recreation Commission has met to discuss the dog park and a discussion item on this matter will be brought up to the council soon. So just as it has up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's give a minute. I think people need to... Some people want to clear the room.
We're all.
Okay. Are there any additional town manager items? That's it. Okay. Then we are to the council. Any council reports? Sloan has one.
I have one.
Okay.
I attended the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority meeting on May 2, where the budget was approved for the upcoming fiscal year. And the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority is fiscally sound.
Great. Thank you. Any reports?
All I'd like to do is report that SB 50 has been amended to basically merge it with Senator McGuire's bill. I have not had a chance to read it in any detail. Either way, we... Our authority is being restricted to some extent at Sacramento's level, but...
Thank you. Just one. There, this Saturday, the 11th, Tams Executive Director is inviting everybody to go to the May Madness Classic Car Show, which also has a test drive electric vehicles component in downtown Santa Fel on Fourth Street. So noon to 4 this Saturday in Santa Fel.
Thank you.
Eli? Old and new.
Today's Chamber of Commerce meeting was canceled as there was no quorum. The Chamber of Commerce held an auction last week, I believe it was, and that was a successful event. I attended an ABAG meeting last week as well. Jim was there. Councilman Andrews was there as well. We discussed the issue of RENA subregions, which I brought up at a previous council report. But basically, there's the option for portions of Marin County to sort of devolve themselves into subregions and basically determine RENA numbers at a more local level. I think we're still sort of determining what the implications of this would be for a town like Corder Madera. And I hope to be able to come back to you in the future with sort of a process for how we might examine whether or not that's of interest to us. And Jim mentioned the housing bills that were discussed. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have two quick ones. We had a disaster prep council meeting Monday. And there was a CERT drill on Saturday, which sounded like it was very successful. Forty-four CERT volunteers were signed in. They had 36 volunteer victims. They were set up around home middle school. It was a very, very large drill. They had disaster trailers there. They had everything out. But it sounds like it went very, very well. We are doing an amazing job in this town. The neighborhood groups are just super organized, super involved, and it's really encouraging. I also attended a homeless committee meeting about the mobile shower program. Was one of the main topics. Since the showers were started last March, they have been 2,800 showers administered to people. There have been no real problems at all. They have been very successful at engaging people. 128 chronically homeless people have now been housed through this program. And even better than that, the retention rate for that is 94%. Of them are staying in housing. So we are successfully engaging people and getting them here. One of the showers, there's two showers that are mobile. One of them is broken. When that one is fixed, which they're in the process of doing now, we're going to be starting the program in Corder Madera, which we've talked about in council meetings in the past. Hopefully, that'll happen in the next couple of months. And we'll continue the success of that program. And that was it?
Yes. I was wondering if Peter Brown might want to have anything to say about Wednesday and Thursday evenings as a matter of a public announcement. Please.
Happy to, Councilmember Kuhnheart. So we have kicked off our community engagement portion of the climate adaptation plan. And we have two meetings the next two evenings. So it'll be a busy week for me. But from 6:30 to 8:30 both nights, on Wednesday night, we're going to do it at the Cove School. And we're going to focus on kind of low land, flood risk, sea level rise type of issues. And then we're also going to talk about the plan in general. And then the following night, we have an event that is co-hosted by the Lions, Corder Madera Lions, at the REC Center, the community center right down the street. And that'll be more of a hillside wildfire risk, wildland urban interface type of a meeting. So yeah, the community has been invited. And please, please attend if you're interested. I think it'll be a really interesting presentation and discussion with the community each of the next two evenings.
I should have mentioned in the disaster prep meeting, people asked actually about the climate adaptation plan, and were incredibly complimentary, especially those from Larkspur. We're like, how did you do this? What's going on? What are you guys doing?
So it was great. Thank you, Peter.
Any chance you could get a message on our message board in front of the REC Center for those two different meetings?
I drove by today and I saw there's a big band tomorrow night at the REC Center. So that's being promoted. But yeah, we can do our best to get that up there as well.
Supposedly, they can cycle.
Sure.
Also...
Oh, oh, thank you, Adam. The other...
Town hall.
Yeah. So the other two workshops, it's, I guess it's the week of workshops with the community. We do have on both Saturday morning and Monday evening, I think the Saturday morning time is 9:30 to 12:30. It's at the community center. It is an open house. So come anytime during that three-hour window that you, that works best for you. We'll have some visual displays. We'll have some summary reports of the work that the working group has done to date. And we'll also have staff and architects and engineers available to, and perhaps some council members, to talk about the need and the likely direction for a town hall edition. And then, so that'll occur both Saturday from 9:30 to 12:30, and then Monday evening, so your Saturday's taken. Maybe Monday after work is better for you. 6:00 to 8:30, I believe, at the community center as well. Two open houses.
And those will be on the message board as well?
I don't know how to do that myself, but I trust I can find somebody who can.
I bet you can.
I can help you. I can help you with that. That one, I'm going to hand that to Adam. And next door, I think it has been posted, although I'm not quite sure. It's been in our newsletter. We've been trying to get all this stuff out there, so yeah.
Okay, then we can move on to the review of the draft agenda for May 21. Are there any comments or questions? Yes, Jim?
Item two, the Mill Valley refuse. If they're going to recommend that we all convert to dual stream, please have them bring examples of what the bins look like.
Okay.
So that we can sort of, at least folks can get an idea of what everybody's talking about.
Okay.
I believe they're going to have like a presentation with information and a comparison of rates and benefits and all of that for everyone.
But I'm specifically saying, bring the goddamn cans.
Oh, like?
Okay.
So physical, so actual props?
Yeah.
Okay. We will contact them and mention that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments on the agenda? Okay, if not, we're going to adjourn the council meeting and we're going to open the sanitary district number two meeting. So let's begin with roll call.
Board Member Bailey?
Here.
Board Member Beckman?
Here.
Board Member Kuhnheart?
Here.
Vice President Andrews?
Yes.
President Rivasio?
Here. I think we already saluted the flag, so let's just roll on to public comment. Is there any member of the public who wants to comment about an item not on the agenda for the sanitary district this evening? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to the consent calendar. The purpose is to group items together, which are routine and been previously discussed, do not require further discussion. Is there anybody of the member of the public or staff or council wishes to pull a member from the consent calendar? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve items.
No move.
For A and for B.
Second.
Board Member Bailey?
Yes.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Kuhnheart?
Yes.
Vice President Andrews?
Yes.
President Rivasio?
Yes. We have no public hearing items. We have one business item, approval of plans and contract documents and authorization to advertise for bids for the 2019 sewer rehab project. Peter?
Thank you, President Rivasio. Members of the board, have a brief intro and then I'll turn it over to Jared for about a one to two-minute oral presentation on your staff report. The one thing I would like to say is that I believe that this is one of the first times we've done a comprehensive integration between our pavement management program and our sewer system assessment. It's been quite difficult and complicated to determine both of those systems. You know, how is the sewer main lines, all the laterals connect to the main lines, right? How are the main lines performing? Are they, do they have good integrity? Do they have cracks, leaks, root intrusion? Do we have vitrified clay pipe in our system? We do. We have thousands and thousands of feet of it. It doesn't hold up very well. One of the portions of this project is to primarily replace a long section of vitrified clay pipe on Tamal Vista. That, that street is, as you all know, is slated for a streetscape improvement. So we want to get all this underground work done ahead of the above-ground street enhancements. So I'm just really proud of the staff. They've worked, I think RJ, Jared, and Fernanda in particular, there are three engineers, have turned themselves inside out these last few months to get this ready. It's really difficult when you have a time clock ticking. In this particular case, we can't really do anything above ground until we get the underground stuff done. And so they will tell you that they're glad it's coming together. And I'll just turn it over to Jared for a brief summary of the ask tonight.
Thank you. I'm not even sure what vitrified clay pipe is.
I was just looking that up. Maybe Peter could define it for it.
It sounds horrible.
Yeah. So clay, just, I would just say, you know, imagine a pipe made of clay. Back in the day, it was a pretty easy material. Jared's actually a structural engineer. He can talk about it for probably half an hour. I don't recommend that. But it's a material that was lightweight and ubiquitous and easy to use. And many jurisdictions throughout the United States used clay pipe for their sewer systems. The problem is, in a place like ours, where there's settlement, heavy weight, the longevity isn't there. It cracks, it breaks, it opens up. Now, cast iron is a much more desired material for something like that, that you want to last 50 to 80 years. We have a pipe that is clay that was built that long ago, but hasn't lasted. So it has to come out.
Think of plant pots.
Thank you.
Plant pots are good.
Thank you, Peter. President and board members?
No. Sounds like it is now. Sounds like it is now. Nope. Oh geez.
I feel like that happens every time.
If we ever do any improvement to this conference, this meeting room, I want a direct wire to that.
The number of batteries we've killed on that thing is off the charts.
Someone's going to make a lot of money inventing a microphone that doesn't burn through batteries that way. It can't just be us.
Or alternatively.
Yeah, I think we're good.
We can take that last microphone and a long cable and run it to the podium.
All right, yeah, so, so yeah, jumping into this, thank you, Peter, for that intro. The, yeah, the 2019 sewer rehab project that you see in front of you in the staff report, really, I think Peter touched on all the high points for it, but in advance of the paving job that we're looking at, we're really trying to spend, you know, some good time and get in underneath the roadway and underneath the sidewalks, so we don't have to do that. We don't have to make these emergency repairs and tear up our roads. The VCP or vitreous clay pipe that Peter had mentioned is true. You guys would be astonished by how much is below the town infrastructure, below the ground. It's, I don't want to put an estimate out there, but it's, it's significant.
It was cheap at the time.
It was cheap at the time. It was. And some of it is in decent condition, just so, just so you know. But some, a lot of it is not, so we really want to get in there and do our due diligence to, to improve that pipe and reduce the inflow and infiltration of the sanitary system. So yeah, in summary, this report outlines the streets that are part of the pavement project for this fall. And that's what's really driving the locations for the sewer rehab that we're going to be doing, which is included in this, in the scope. Yeah, so real quickly, the list of streets. The report describes eight roads of the pavement rehab job. You see a list of 10. That's because two of the, of the streets are part of the Tamal Vista Complete Streets Project, which is a separate project, and that's actually going to follow next year in the summer of 2020. That's the anticipated construction. But the streets would be Council Crest, Montecito Drive, the upper half of that, Meadow Ridge Drive, Ridge Court, Manzanita Avenue, Eastman Drive, Sausalito Street, Oakdale, Tamal Vista, and Buena Vista. You can see also in the staff report attachment, the beginning and an approximate length of those, those roads. So yeah, and as part of this, I think Peter touched on, we will be including the lower lateral. If you're all remembering, the upper lateral is on the private property in general and the lower lateral is on the public right of way. So we're going to be including the work on the lower lateral and wrapping that into the scope of this project. So yeah, if there's any questions, I'm happy to address those.
Questions?
I have one question about, not the specific project, but where we're tearing up the roads. Has any thought been given to putting in conduit so if we ever want to underground our utilities, it might be cheaper than waiting, you know, having them dig up the road down the line if we already have conduit there to accept it and...
So you think of joint trenching, something similar to that?
Yeah, or I'm, I'm just thinking of, I think of the town of Brentwood, when they were building it out, they required developers to put in conduits so that they could underground the utilities eventually. And when time came to do that, all they had to do was sort of connect the various subdivisions as opposed to doing the whole thing. And I'm just wondering.
Yeah, that's interesting. We, we've really looked at this one with the scope of replacing the sewer and like kind, and then just do the roadway surfacing. But that's something that we can consider for the future if we're doing a repaving of the road to lay in some utility conduit.
In particular, I'm thinking of, we've got, we've designated parts of town as being fire areas, basically the hills. So if you were doing work there, sort of get it all set up so that we could easily underground all the electric wires.
You're thinking of the power, yeah.
Yeah. So it's not a fire hazard up there, or less of a fire hazard.
Yeah.
PG&E has a policy of not sharing a trench, period.
It would have to be, it's an isolated trench.
Isolated trench. Now, there are different physical ways to isolate the trench, but they have a policy, we don't share the trench. They just do.
Right, but if we're digging up the roads anyway?
Yeah.
We've got however many trenches we need.
The other thing that's on all the lines is the old and new cable and.
Right.
All up and down Christmas Tree Hill, new fiber optic cable on the, up on the line, up on the poles.
Right. So.
Any other questions for Jared on this? Okay, then we will open it to the public for comment. Is there any public comment on this topic? I'm surprised.
$2.6 million of sanitary district funds, no comments.
I like that. I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible.
I'll move that we approve the project plans and contract documents and authorize the district staff to advertise for bids.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Board Member Bailey?
Yes.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member, Board Member Kuhnheart?
Yes.
Vice President Andrews?
Yes.
President Rivasio?
Thank you for approving our town.
Then we are on to district manager and board member reports.
Briefly, President Rivasio, I wanted to follow up on an item from a month ago where I talked about our need to potentially do some emergency repairs and potholing for our air release valves in that tricky area near Corder Madera Creek on both the north